Good evening. Welcome to the Northampton City Council Meeting of June 1st, 2017. I'm City Council President Bill Dwight and I will be presiding tonight. And as is our custom, before we convene, we have a public comments section where the public is allowed to -- is invited to come and speak on any topic of their choosing, as long as they abide by the rules of the chambers. And those rules are, please keep your comments under three minutes. You'll see a counter up here above me and all the Trump things. Okay, so that -- and when you step up, please state your name and address for the public record. As I said, you can speak on any topic, on anything. We ask that, one, that you respect the decorum of the chambers and refrain from cussing, and also that you, please do not defame other people. As I will point out, all of us up here, you can defame us till late in the morning if you want, but it's -- because we're elected officials and thereby we're not protected by those things. But if your neighbor annoys the bejesus out of you, you can say that, but don't mention your neighbor's name by way of example, so. And also understanding that the council, because this is your time to talk, the council will not respond. We will listen to you, as we should, but this is your time to speak. If you want to stick around after public comment, you'll see we'll do a whole lot of talking. We just wanted to say we're impressed with that. So if you ask any questions, they'll have to stand as rhetorical questions because we're not able to respond. All that said, let's get started. We have Ed Olmstead, please.
My name's Ed Olmstead. I'm at 43 Stilson Avenue in Florence, and I've come by tonight to thank the City Council for unanimously supporting the Blue Communities Resolution on its first reading. I also want to thank Northampton High School Environmental Club for joining in recommending this resolution to the City Council. This resolution supports the stewardship of water as a natural resource, denotes water and sanitation services as fundamental human rights, commits the city to avoiding single-use water bottles where feasible, and supports the installation of water bottle filling stations. These are not earth-shattering commitments, but they are significant local actions. I want to speak particularly to the democratic process and effort to increase involvement of all citizens in this undertaking. Bill Diamond brought the idea of Northampton becoming the first blue community in the United States to the Climate Action Group at our church a few months ago. He heard about this in Canada and decided to get the relevant information. He joined with others, and this simple genesis was the -- is this was the simple genesis of the effort that has led to this resolution. I believe this is a positive example of the value of our democracy. The fact that the City Council unanimously supported this resolution sends a message of support for democracy. It says that reasonable initiatives brought forward by citizens have a chance at acceptance and enactment. I believe that the commitment to undertake a public awareness campaign is one of the most important parts of this resolution. Raising awareness and encouraging civil discussion and cooperative action at the local level sends a message. It says that we do not have to accept the current climate of divisiveness and public conflict as the norm, nor even as a universal current reality. I hope that in talking about this issue, we are encouraged as a community to deepen our commitment as active stewards and protectors of the natural resources we have been given. I anticipate that this resolution will pass, and I thank the council for its consideration and support.
Thank you very much. Mike O'Brien, please.
Hi, everyone. How you doing? My name is Mike O'Brien, 70 Acre Brook Drive in Florence. Just come up here tonight to talk about some of the logistical concerns and possible misconceptions that may have come forth about the Memorial Basketball Court project at Ryan Road. In the last meeting, I guess that was the first reading, it was voted on unanimously to accept the gift, but I know people have maybe reached out to you about some of their concerns. I just want to address those specifically. One of the ones that came forward was they were worried about the cost. It will be a completely privately funded project. No money from the city will be used for the project whatsoever. Another one that was a bit of concern, some people were concerned it might affect the current layout of Ryan Road School. That's actually not the case. No swing sets or baseball fields or playgrounds will be moved in any capacity whatsoever. We'll be using a space that's already been sort of allocated as a play space for the kids. It'll just be improved, so. Another concern that was brought forth was that the lights would be on all night. In fact, the basketball court lights would be out before any of the lights at the school, the street lights, the parking lot lights, the lights that go behind the school for security, so the basketball courts would have the least effect there. Also that the lights aren't stadium lights. I think people, they heard like an athletic arena, they thought it might look like the lights at Main's Field with the giant towers and giant bulbs. It's actually a much, much smaller scale project than that. The lights would be smaller than the street lamps. They would be also really focused on the space itself. There wouldn't be a lot of extra light pollution in the area as well, so that's definitely been taken into consideration already. One concern that was brought forth, or another concern about the lights themselves, they actually won't even be on during the wintertime. It's really just when the space would be usable, so if there's snow on the ground, basketball court isn't usable, so the lights won't be on, so when the leaves are down, they won't be bleeding through the trees at all. Also, the last thing, which I thought was a really good point to bring forward, someone's concerned that the space wasn't really designed for elementary school students, which is what that school is for. To that point, we're actually putting in adjustable basketball hoops that could be lowered for the youngest students at the school, so it will be used for recess, for PE class. Actually, it's a really practical application in that regard. And I think my favorite part about this project is that it will grow with those students. They're not going to be elementary students forever, so as they grow, the hoops will go higher and they'll be able to play on that court for many, many years. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Wayne Tebow, please.
Wayne Tebow, 830 Chesterfield Road, Florence. I just wanted to make a few comments on the DPW-sponsored week that was May 23rd, the watershed walk at the Mountain Street Reservoir. The 24th was the wastewater plant, and the 25th was the drinking water treatment plant. And just want to express a few observations and what I learned with the walk. As far as the watershed walk, it was very informative on problems involved in protecting the watersheds, issues concerning invasive species, ways to protect our valuable watershed, and areas that have been neglected for too many years. Invasive species such as bittersweet have been allowed for years to grow and choke and kill out many of the trees in the watershed area. Many of the different tree species throughout our New England area are being destroyed by different insects, diseases, et cetera, and that we really need to do more to protect our trees, especially in these watershed areas, to protect our water resources. And the wastewater treatment plant was given by, the tour was given by Jim Zimmerman. He's the chief engineer there. He's been there for, I believe, 30 years. And it was really interesting, he pointed out a lot of the issues they have with what people dump down the sewers and how it affects the process. And when they put a lot of these different things in there that affect the process, it's more work for the employees, it takes a lot more chemicals to treat the sewage, and some of the, and a lot of it kills off the good bacteria, which kills the process. One thing I learned too, that it's hard to keep long-term employees there, because a lot of guys, even though they offered to train some of the young people working there to get their licenses and that, once a lot of them get their licenses, they tend to move on to other jobs. So that makes it harder to operate the facility on the supervisor personnel. And the other thing is, it is a real old plant that's had upgrades, and I know it's got to have a lot more upgrades, and that makes it tougher too on training new personnel and so forth. And then the final one, the water, drinking water plant, that was very interesting. I guess it was built around 2007 or '08. There was one long-term employee there, and the rest were a lot of young guys. But they gave a real good tour, explained everything, asked questions, and one of the things that I got there that was of real interest is they do prevent [bleep] and trying to save money on overtime, call-ins, and everything else, and they appeared to me to be real dedicated employees. So I just want to say thanks to all the city employees involved for that DPW week.
Thank you very much. Daphne Stevens, please.
This is Daphne Stevens, 56 Fire Form. That was a wonderful segue, because he was talking about invasives, and I didn't bring any bittersweet with me, but I did bring, well, it's quickly, but it's very invasive, garlic mustard. And the reason I brought this was, I'm going to back up a little more. When I used to walk where I used to live, there would be lots of cans around on the sides of the street. There were no water bottles then, so I didn't see any water bottles, just soda cans. And then about 10 years ago, I started noticing this plant, and it was very rare to see it. Now it's absolutely everywhere. You all probably recognize it. Most of them have, the flowers have gone to seed. So this is a very bad invasive. Poison ivy is another very bad invasive, and it's toxic, as is, well, never mind. Anyway, so today I was walking, and look what I found. This is invasive, too. I never used to see them, but now you see them everywhere, and this is a toxic invasive like poison ivy is, because it has pet in the plastic, it kills a lot of wildlife, and it, as we talked about a few weeks ago, it is taking over our oceans with the five gyres out there. It is taking over that poor little island that's covered, and most of it is water bottles. So we've already discussed how the water isn't as safe as the water in your tap. The bottle is not safe because it is made of plastic, and plastic, as we know, is a petroleum product, and you really don't want these petroleum products in your house or on your streets. You want to avoid anything that's invasive. I put that down as an invasive.
Thank you very much. Helen Armstrong, please.
My name's Helen Armstrong. I live at 13 Butternut Lane. I talked to the town recycling coordinator, and she referred me to the Sierra Club website, because what you left out of the resolution is the cost of disposing of plastic bottles once they've gone into the waste stream. And she said, she did not have statistics about how much of the waste stream that Northampton generates is, in fact, plastic bottles, but she said it's, you certainly find them. And we have a contract with the pedal people who sort them out at the transfer station, and that's pretty good. But plastic nevertheless is a sort of litter, and as Daphne has told us, you find it especially floating in the oceans. When I worked in Africa, I started to see plastic water bottles washing up on the beaches. In fact, there were more water bottles than shells. So they pose a risk to our wildlife on land and marine life in the water, and the plastic does not biodegrade. The carbon footprint of bottled water is 11 to 31 times greater than that of tap water. This is from the Sierra Club website. Most bottled water is really packaged tap water, and I think we know that Northampton hosts a Coca-Cola plant because of the quality of our water, which they're mining and selling elsewhere. So bottled water companies are not regulated under the same rigorous standards as public water supplies. So I would say that in order to keep Northampton clean, one of the things that we can do at this level is ban plastic water bottles and reusable bottles from all municipally funded or administered activities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Molly Hornby Finch, please.
Hi, I'm Molly Hornby Finch, and I live at 27 Nipford Ave. So I'm a senior at Northampton High School, and we're working to reduce the amount of plastic water bottle use there, but it's not enough, and so I think that, like, making Northampton the first blue community will really have a huge impact. And, you know, the person who's in charge of running the government in the U.S. is not taking enough action and has pulled out of the Paris Agreement, and so this kind of local action really will move the, you know, will reduce the amount of pollution. And so thank you for unanimously voting on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tina Ingman, please.
Hi, I'm Tina Ingman of Park Hill Road. Thank you, councilors, for voting for the Blue Communities Resolution at the last meeting. I spoke in favor of Blue Communities then, and I have one thing to add. Our group has a website where we are going to put up information that we've been gathering about tap water and bottled water and what other communities are doing. And mostly information will be up there in a few days, and it's called, for now, northhamptonbluewater.org. We hope other communities will be inspired by our example. So for another topic, in light of the historic mistake made today by the current administration in DC, I want to talk for a minute about acting on the climate problem. It's not just Trump who wants us to turn our backs on the rest of the world by saying we will not honor the Paris Climate Agreement. The Republican Party platform was all about keeping alive the fossil fuel age and preventing the clean energy revolution. Most people in the USA think we should stay in the agreement. Most people know by now that climate change is real. People's awareness of the severity is peeping through the clouds of disinformation, but the new denial is the idea that we can fix this in a gradual fashion. We don't have time for that. We need a rapid World War II-style mobilization to transition to clean energy. It doesn't feel like an emergency here, now, but baked-in effects of what we're doing now are on delay. This is an issue with a time limit. We in America are not acting as if we only have a handful of years to turn it around. So with our federal government doing opposite of what is needed, America must rely on state and local governments to do the right thing. I'm proud that our city has taken positive steps towards the protection of our common home from the Sustainability Commission, the plastic bag ban, and now Blue Communities. I am hoping that we dramatically ratchet up our actions on climate starting today. I'm not sure exactly what form this takes in our local city, but I believe at this point, every decision, every priority list should be done with the climate crisis in mind, and we need to speak loudly to overcome the heavily funded climate disinformation which continues. Remember, we only have a handful of years. We don't have time to wait for a turnaround in Washington. And I think all of our decisions at every level must be overlaid with the goal of maintaining a livable climate in mind, from the state government, to our individual homes, to our city and town government. And in the style of the day, I want to end with a message I saw on Twitter today from futurist Alex Stefan. Core facts of your life: Our planet's in crisis. What core facts in your life? Our planet's in crisis. Time's running out. Success demands huge fast changes. Predatory delay is everywhere. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. That's all I have. Signed up. Does anyone else wish to speak at this moment? Last chance. Okay, thank you very much, and I'm going to ask the administrative assistant to please call the roll.
Counselor Bibel. Counselor Carney.
President.
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
Here.
Counselor Labard.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Nat.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, so we may convene. As announces, this is a public, there's a public hearing concerning the FY 2018 budget, and this is in accordance with the Charter of Northampton, Massachusetts, Article 7, Finance and Fiscal Procedures. Section 7-4 is an action on the operating budget, a public hearing, and by order of the City Council, a public hearing to be held to consider the proposed FY 2018 budget. And here are all persons who wish to be here, heard, thereon. The public hearing is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the budget? Want any item on the budget? And we have no one, no one signed up on the list? Anyone who would speak in opposition? Okay.
I guess I'd move to close the public hearing.
And a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that was a quick public hearing. Now we're up to recognition, one-minute announcements.
I mean, it might be appropriate to point out that we had some open public hearings.
Good point. Yeah, it should be. As far as our process is concerned, we've actually had a number of hearings and discussions relative to the budget. In fact, actually, last week, we had, we had the department heads to discuss the larger segments of the budget, with some participation from the community, including a breakthrough for us. We went live with texting, and we got one text. It was very exciting. But, so, there, and I should point out that while I'd say about six or seven people participated, that's 700% increase from the year past. So I consider that a landmark of some sort.
It is.
I'm not going to interpret from the absence of discussion about the budget that we are, you know, everyone's completely excited about it, or pleased, or whatever. I don't know what to read from that, and it wouldn't be appropriate to. But as we go forward and we have, we're going to, this is the most significant portion of our job, actually. The council provides fiduciary oversight of the budget, and hopefully next year, we might be able to generate more interest. Obviously, if there were an override that was pending, that would certainly generate a lot of interest, but as it stands, as I keep saying, this is our moral document. It's a dry text, but it is a moral document expressing the values that we have and where we choose to invest in our community. So, that said, so now we go on to recognition and one-minute announcements, and Counselor Labard has one.
Thank you. I want to thank Lori Sullivan, who organized, putting together the three young girls from JFK, holding our mayor and city council banner. They did excellent, and I think all of us councilors who marched want to thank them. They were just excellent. And their names are Miley, oh boy, Berrios, Kathleen Sullivan, Sandy, we've been, three of us trying to figure this last name out, Hohec, from JFK. So thank you to the three girls. They did excellent.
Anyone else, any other? Holy cats. Okay. Now we're up to communications and proclamations for the mayor. The mayor is here, and he has some presentations. Your honor, to the floor. Getting your proclamation.
Oh, it's all right, Doc.
I understand.
So I did have a proclamation I wanted to issue tonight, as well as a couple of other items. The proclamation is actually for June 11, but obviously we will not be meeting between now and then. It's entitled "Race Amity Day." Whereas in 2015, the Massachusetts Legislature passed the Race Amity Act, establishing the second Sunday in June of each year as a time for Americans to reflect and affirm the dignity of the diverse racial, cultural, and religious backgrounds that constitutes the United States of America. And whereas the greatest asset of the city of Northampton is its people, and whereas friendship, inclusion, respect, and kindness are shared ideals of our community, and whereas the city of Northampton holds true to the great seal of the United States, which bears the inscription "E Pluribus Unum," which translates from Latin as "out of many, one." And whereas organizations and communities across the country, including the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, motivated by the ideal of the kind motto of E Pluribus Unum, have joined together in introspection and reflection on how the diversity of our people have been indispensable in creating the United States. And so now therefore I am making it clear for us to hereby proclaim June 11, 2017, to be Race Amity Day in the city of Northampton, and I ask everyone to recognize this event and to celebrate its annual observance, and witness whereof I have set my hand and imprinted the seal of the city of Northampton. So that is the proclamation I have to issue. The other item I wanted to update you on is you may recall that as part of the capital improvement plan program, I came to you following the adoption of that to ask for your authorization for borrowing for several of our large capital projects totaling $3,650,000. And so subsequent to your approval, we have gone through the bonding process, and as part of that, we received a rating call from Standard &amp; Poor's, at which they went over sort of our progress over the last year financially, looked at our end-of-year reports, looked at our audited statements, in anticipation of the bond offering that we'd be doing for this borrowing. this borrowing. Standard &amp; Poor's issued, not only for the impending bonds that we were issuing, but also for all of our current outstanding debt, an updated rating affirming our AAA rating. So that just was issued, actually, about a week ago. And then, right after that, our financial services agency, First Southwest, did, in fact, hold a bond auction, accepting bids from companies on our 10-year general obligation notes totaling, again, $3.65 million. And this, again, was for our Pulaski Park project, River Road retaining wall, for the MSBA roof projects at Leeds and Bridge, it was our paving projects for next year, it was DPW equipment, and it was the work that we're doing at Forbes Library for HVAC and for windows. There were seven bidders as part of the bond offering, and the winning bid on our bonds was awarded to a company called Montgomery Scott LLC. But what's most important is that the average interest rate on those bonds is 1.518%. So, which our rating agency said was actually performing better than national communities that are ranked either AA and AAA. So the long and short of it is, our AAA rating was affirmed, and when we went out to bond, we were able to borrow this, you know, $3.65 million at a very favorable interest rate because of the work that we've done as a city to have a strong financial policies, rebuild our reserve, strong management policies, and I wanted to update you on that. So that is the second communication. And I just want to point out that a copy of the bond rating report from S&amp;P is on the city's website. It's on the mayor's financial page. It's there with all of our previous bond ratings that we receive. And so if people want to read that, they can read the full seven-page report. The next item on the agenda is a presentation that I wanted to have DPW Director Donna LaScalia make to you this evening. As you know, later on on your agenda, there is a required annual vote of the City Council to either approve or disapprove the stormwater and flood control credit and incentive policy, which the ordinance outlines the DPW should submit to the mayor annually. I get to review and make modifications, and then ultimately approve, and then I submit it to the City Council for approval or disapproval. It's coming up at the end of your agenda tonight, so I wanted to have the director just make a presentation to you. There's actually no change to the policy. We're not making any change to the policy from the previous fiscal year. So it's essentially, we're asking you to approve the FY '17 policy for FY '18. So I'd like to ask Director LaScalia to make a presentation now.
I should point out that originally, there was a... Donna was going to come and present before the Public Works Committee, but we didn't have a quorum, so... And she showed up. Well, we didn't have all the members show up. So she gets credit for that, and now she's back to... We said we decided that the presentation would happen in the full council. It's all yours, Donna.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I just want to provide a very brief overview of the credit and incentive policy with some statistics of credits that have been issued and kind of dollar amounts associated with them, and the types of credits that are available for folks to apply for. So just some kind of general statistics. There are currently 1,016 parcels that have been approved for credits through this policy out of 11,140 parcels. So a single property can apply for more than one credit, and 277 properties have been approved for multiple credits, and I'll run through what the credits are in a moment. No matter the number of credits approved, however, the total reduction in fee is limited to 50% per parcel. There is one exception to that, which I'll get into in a minute. So in summary, there are currently 1,319 approved credits with a total value of $76,368. So fairly significant amounts, both in number of parcels and dollar value. So there are 19 different credits that are available for people to apply for, and they fall into eight categories. So I'll run through the eight categories. There's what we call the Small Residential Stormwater Improvement Credit. So this is like a rain garden, porous pavement and pavers, a dry well. This offers up to a 25% fee reduction, and as of May of this year, two parcels have been approved for these credit with a total value of $100. We also have what's called the NPDES Permit Credit. NPDES stands for National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. This offers a 10% fee reduction. It applies to properties having a permit from the National Stormwater Program for a separate stormwater drain system. One parcel has been approved for this credit. The value is $181. We have Educational Programs Credit. These would apply to educational entities. 10% fee reduction to increase awareness of stormwater issues through public education and outreach. There have been no applications received for this credit. We have Protected Land Credits. So this would be like Chapter 61, Conservation Restriction Land, Agricultural Preservation Restriction Land. These are actually quite popular. 830 parcels have been approved for these credits, total value of $32,970. We also have a Commonly Owned Undeveloped Land Credit. So distinction here between undeveloped land and protected land. So undeveloped land just means there's no development on it. And this is sort of a variable credit, but a single owner can combine multiple undeveloped parcels, so long as they are contiguous, and there is a reduction of pervious area. Stormwater Best Management Practice Credits. So this, again, is a variable fee reduction, 25% or 50%. It is an incentive for larger property owners to construct and maintain stormwater control systems that help reduce the downstream impact of stormwater runoff. So these are typically requirements of a stormwater management permit that we would issue for development, and so basically, we are giving folks credit for adhering to the requirements in their permit. 108 parcels have been approved for these credits with a value of $20,236. So this is the one exception that I talked about, and this is called the Dedicated Stormwater Management Property Credit. This is a 100% fee reduction. So this is the one credit that you can, that is possible, that credits the entire fee. This provides relief to properties such as subdivisions and homeowners' associations that have a separate parcel that's dedicated solely to stormwater management, such as like a detention or retention basement, basin. Parsons Brook Homeowners Association is an example of where this would occur. So three parcels have been approved for this credit. Fee credit value is $326. And the final category is Assessors Tax Exemption Based Credits. So this is a 50% fee reduction, provides economic relief to qualifying seniors, as well as low-income property owners. 329 property owners have been approved for these credits. The value is $20,485. So that's an overview of the current credit and incentive policy and the proposed incentive policy.
You prepared to take questions, if the council has questions? Let me cut to Counselor Labard.
Yeah. Donna, who do the residents talk to on the credit program that you have? Who handles that?
They can direct their questions to Katie Sakowitz, who's the Stormwater Utility Administrator, and I can get her contact information for you.
What's the extension there?
I don't know. They can call the main number and ask to be transferred to her.
They could also use your new email address.
They can do that, yes.
They can do what?
They can visit our website, and there's a link to DP... It's called DPW Info is our new email address, and they can send their queries.
I do have to say, when all this came out the first time, even at our home, we had difficulties getting somebody to come to our house. So did other people, too. I have people right now who have the rain barrels, and they're not happy with it. I have great concerns from way back of asking somebody to come, "Take a look at your property. Take a look at the plant," or whatever, and it's never happened. So hopefully, now, we'll get ahold of Katie.
Sure. I can't speak to the past, but what I can say is that we run a tight operation, and please encourage them to contact Katie and...
I'll do that. Okay. Great. Thank you.
And we should be clear, this is for the incentive programs, not for if someone's appealing their assessment.
I understand.
Just so we're clear, so the public understands that the program that we're talking about here is to...
For credits.
Credits incentive program.
Right. This is what I'm talking about.
Yeah. Counselor Klein, and then Counselor Sherrill.
Hi. I just thank you very much for that information. It's very helpful. I'm just wondering if it's available on the website, or if you can share it with us, just so that we have it in case people...
The statistics?
Yeah.
Sure. I can... This is not currently posted on the website, but I can make sure that it gets to you.
Thank you.
Great.
Counselor Sherrill.
Just to clarify, since it was mentioned before, the rain barrel program, that is a... You can buy them from the city at a reduced cost, but they don't qualify for, as an incentive or a percent.
Yes, that's not covered under this incentive policy.
The incentive there is the reduced cost.
Right.
Yeah. Other questions? Yeah, and I think for the public at large, if they're trying to follow along and figure out just what the hell it is we're talking about, actually, with the stormwater fee, you have an opportunity to... The idea is the carrot versus stick. This is to promote the reduction of stormwater from running off your property and whatever, and these are programs to give you an opportunity to take advantage of the discounts that you can get on the stormwater and flood control fee by doing some aspect of mitigation. It's also, and I wanted to ask, or just to clarify, the 100% exempt properties, the exemption only applies to the parcel that actually has the system that's contained, that manages the stormwater, not for the developed property.
That is correct. It's the actual parcel.
That has the swale, or the retention pond, or whatever. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
And does Donna need to stay until we get to the second-to-last item on the agenda, or is everyone okay with...
It's in finance.
It's in finance? But it's pretty late in the agenda. Does...
Well, it was on the finance agenda I saw, so...
Yeah, I thought it was. I think it's...
It's in orders.
But in any event, does anyone have any other questions that they think they'd need to ask now?
Oh.
Okay. So, yeah. Okay. So, back to the agenda. And that brings us to the resolution. This is a second reading for Item 17.311. And that's a resolution to have North Hampton, Massachusetts become a blue community. And as you said, this is the second reading. I'll accept a motion.
To approve.
Second. Discussion? Counselor Klein?
I had suggested possibly changing the order of some of the whereases, and Counselor Bidwell, who's not here, actually wrote something up that seemed acceptable to me. I hope that he submitted it.
It is...
Is it in our...
No.
Okay. So basically, any concern that I had about just kind of supporting the order of things so that one whereas supported the one before it or after it was taken care of with his change, so I just want to say that I really... I appreciate that Counselor Bidwell took care of the amendment, and I think it's great.
Well, it's not in the original one you need to amend.
Right. That's what I was just going to say. We have to add that amendment on the...
Oh. So I move to amend as Counselor Bidwell submitted.
So what Counselor Bidwell has submitted, just so, before anyone considers it a second, I have it as the be it further resolved order, right? And it's...
Yeah.
Now, as it reads, be it further resolved that water bottle filling stations will be installed in municipal facilities and parks whenever and wherever feasible. Be it further resolved that the availability of water jugs or dispensers with municipal water should be increased at municipally organized meetings and events. And be it further resolved that where access to municipal water exists, single-use bottled water should no longer be sold in municipal facilities from municipally owned or municipally administered concessions, or from vending machines in public facilities. And be it further resolved that single-use water should no longer be purchased and provided at municipal meetings or events where access to municipal water exists. And be it further resolved that local businesses and institutions are encouraged to install water bottle filling stations and encourage their use as an alternative to single-used... I think we were going to strike that D on that, so we'll do that as a scrip, and it's a single-use bottled water whenever possible.
Move to approve.
Okay. So that's the amendment, and there's the second on that. And a discussion on the amendment? No discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So back to the order. Any discussion on that point? Just like to reiterate my gratitude to Bill Diamond, whose work and organizing in this is really pretty remarkable. He, you know, when he originally came to me, I asked him if he could reap some community interest, and he did. He did. In fact, he got the environmental cover at the high school, which was actually, they are cosponsors on this. And I think it was said in public comment, the fact that this is a citizens' initiative. This was originally proposed and promoted by citizens of the community, and oddly enough, it's sort of coordinated perfectly, or dovetailed perfectly, with many of the issues that we've been discussing now for the last several weeks at least, and historically, over many sessions. And it's the protection of the watershed, it's the protection of our water supply, as Counselor O'Donnell sponsored an ordinance that we passed unanimously to protect from privatization. Actually, I'm not sure it was unanimous. No, it wasn't unanimous. That's right, there was... That's right, there was a dissent. But it did pass. Well, the significant majority, we'll say. And there's been a lot of community talk about this, and that's, I mean, you know, that in and of itself is what resolutions more or less do, is to promote that conversation and discussion, and I'm very grateful for all the work, the hard and heavy, the hard work that's been done previously, and the heavy lift that folks have committed to this, and grateful for the opportunity to be one of the sponsors. Okay.
Okay.
What's your preference? Roll call, or just a...
Roll call.
Roll call vote. Okay. Pam?
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labard?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nat?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherrill?
Yes.
That passes in second reading. Now we come to the consent agenda. Bear with me as I read through this. This is Item 17.322. This is the reappointment of Jeff Jones of 76 Wood Road in Florence as North Hampton Housing Authority Representative to the Community Preservation Commission. And this is to be referred to the Committee on City Services. There's a note, this committee, this appointment will be taken up by the Committee on City Services at its July meeting, currently scheduled for July 10th, per City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22. Item 17.323, that's to approve a petition for renewal of a second-hand dealer license. This is Ryan's Jewelers at 14 Strong Avenue. Item 17.324, that's to approve a petition for supervised display of fireworks for the North Hampton family fourth event. And then also, to approve minutes of May 18, 2017, City Council meeting. Did I miss? What did I miss?
No, we have another appointment.
Am I looking the wrong one? Mine doesn't have it on here.
Mine doesn't have that either. It's a reappointment.
Let me see if I got the most updated version of this. Two, yeah. Do you have a copy of that, so I can see it? Okay. Item 17.336, that's an appointment to the Historical Commission. It's to refer to Committee on City Services. And that would be Craig Dela, 62 Chestnut Street, Florence.
Move, we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion's made. There's a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I missed who the second was.
The second was Counselor LaBard.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we go into recess for the Committee on Finance, where Counselor Murphy will be presiding as we vote on the budget. It's all yours.
Paperwork here. Would you call our roll, please?
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor LaBard?
Present.
Counselor Nash?
Here.
And the first item that we need to do is approve the minutes of our last meeting, which would have been at the council meeting on May 18th. Now, the agenda says May 4th, but we need to amend it to be the 18th, because that's when the meeting actually was. So do we have a motion to amend to the...
So moved.
Second, Finance? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So officially, it now says the 18th. So...
Move approval of the minutes? Second.
Second? Excellent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. And the first thing then, as advertised, is the general fund budget. So this is 17.325, an order to approve general fund budget for FY 2018. Order that to sum of $87,295,399, which is the full amount necessary for fiscal year 2018 general fund budget. That would be July 1 to June 30. Be appropriated for said stated purposes, provided that the appropriation for Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School should be used solely for the purposes of meeting net school spending as defined by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And no fund so appropriated should be transferred to any account or expended for any purpose. That would not be included in the calculation of net school spending. To meet this appropriation, $1,795,797 will be raised and appropriated from the parking meter receipt for reserves, $10,000 from the cemetery perpetual care trust fund, $5,000 from the cemetery sale of lots receipt reserved, $1,1057 from the sewer enterprise fund, $701,764,000 from the water enterprise funds, $116,014 from the solid waste enterprise fund, $276,993 from the stormwater enterprise fund, $5,000 from the wetland filing fees, $1,500 from the water waste fund, $13,609 from Community Preservation Act administrative funds, $27,373 from the reserve for police station debt service, and $83,341, $292 will be raised and appropriated. We have... A motion? Yes, second in Finance. We've had a lot of discussion on this. We've had public meetings on this. I know the mayor and the finance director are here. If we have any last questions before we send this on to full council for first reading. Are there any questions from anyone in Finance or anyone from the council in general? Everybody is comfortable with it at this point? Then in Finance, all in favor of a positive recommendation to council, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Excellent. The next item is for enterprise funds. This is a motion to approve FY 18 enterprise funds upon the recommendation of the mayor. Order that to sum of $6,270,000, which is the full amount necessary for fiscal year 18 sewer enterprise fund budget, again, July 1, 17 to June 30, 18. Be appropriated for the purposes stated, and to meet said appropriation, $5,268,942 is to be raised from sewer receipts, and $1,1058 shall be allocated to indirect costs. And some of the sources for, actually, do you want me to read them all the way through, or are you comfortable?
I think you should.
You want to hear them all? Great. The sewer enterprise fund, $1,568,608 from the sewer, for general sanitary sewer. Sewer treatment, $2,180,638. Sewer debt service, $391,986. Sewer interest, $77,822. Sewer indirect costs, $1,1058. And sewer reserve for capital projects, $1,49,088. Total sewer enterprise fund, $6,270,000.
Move approval? Or do you want to move them, take them to the group?
They're all under the same one.
Okay. They're all under the same one, so I'll just go on to the first one then. And again, this is also for enterprise funds. Order that to sum of $7,646,680, which is the full amount necessary for fiscal year 18 water enterprise fund budget, July 1, 17 to June 30, 18. Be appropriated for the purposes stated, and to meet the appropriation, that $6,128,236 is to be raised from water receipts, and $701,764 shall be allocated to direct costs, and $816,680 shall be transferred from the water stabilization fund. For, the funds will be used for general water, $3,525,121. Water treatment, $1,176,697. Water debt service, $1,770,386. Water interest, $463,712. And indirect costs for water, $701,764, for a grand total of $7,646,680. And then we move on to solid waste. Order the sum of $599,259, which is the full amount necessary for the fiscal year 18 solid waste enterprise fund budget, again, July 1 to June 30, 18. Be appropriated for the purposes stated, and to meet the appropriation, that $355,486 is to be raised from the solid waste receipts, that $116,014 shall be allocated to indirect costs, and $127,759 to be made available from the undesignated fund balance of the solid waste enterprise fund. So, solid waste transfer station, $483,245. Solid waste direct and indirect costs, $116,014, for a grand total of $599,259. And then the last one is stormwater. Order that the sum of $1,957,588, which is the full amount necessary for the fiscal year 2018 stormwater flood control enterprise fund, July 1, 17 to June 30, 18. Be appropriated for the purposes stated, and to meet said appropriation, that $1,680,565 is to be raised from the stormwater flood control receipts, and $276,993 shall be allocated to indirect costs. The stormwater flood control drain operations will be $1,235,367. Stormwater flood control operations will be $323,587. Stormwater flood control debt will be $40,000. Stormwater flood control interest will be $6,250. Stormwater flood control indirect costs will be $276,993. And stormwater stabilization fund will be $75,361, for a grand total of $1,957,558. We have a...
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any questions on any, Counselor?
Susan, it is relative to the stormwater indirect costs, there have been some remarks and comments made that the indirect costs were not included in the discussion and the debate of establishment of the stormwater fee. I wonder if you could explain, or, Your Honor, the breakdown on the indirect costs and...
Well, she can certainly go through that. There's a page in your book on all the indirects.
Right, no, no. And I understand, they're all itemized for the total of $276,000.
Sure. So I can, I'll have Susan do that, but just as a general observation, we were creating an enterprise fund, and that was certainly discussed. And actually, it was heavily scrutinized during the whole process, so much so that we actually looked at all of the indirects for all of our enterprise funds as part of the public conversation. So we went through a pretty exhaustive review of that. So I'm unsure how anyone could have assumed that there'd be no indirect costs, since during the actual debate on the creation of the utility, we had a separate debate about indirect costs and refined them. So, and started including them actually in that, in the first budget as part of the, that included the enterprise, the new enterprise fund.
It's pro forma with enterprise fund.
Well, it's certainly part of how, it's part of how they're structured. And again, indirect and direct costs, you'll find them for the school department, you'll find them for Smith Vocational. It's a very, you know, common, you know, way that we do municipal accounting, and it's the same thing with our enterprise funds. So...
And the indirect costs essentially are the costs associated with the administration of the services?
Director LaScalia mentioned the stormwater administrator earlier. So the stormwater administrator's salary, for example, is paid out of that. Her health insurance benefits are not part of the DPW budget. None of our health insurance benefits are in any individual budget. So in addition to paying for the salary, it also pays for the health insurance benefits for that employee as well. So that would be an example of an indirect cost. The billing services that the collector and treasurer collector's office provides for the utility, again, it's not in the stormwater enterprise fund budget, but it's billed to the enterprise fund budget for that percentage of the bills that are for the stormwater bills. Same thing with your water and sewer bills. That's generally, and I can have the finance director go through the specifics for that particular utility.
Right. So my understanding is that all the costs associated with the administration and application of this is folded in to the indirect costs to have a comprehensive coverage of the service, in fact. It's not just, the money doesn't, but the vast amount of the money is devoted and dedicated to direct projects as opposed to the administration, but there is a cost associated with that. And to fob it off somewhere else wouldn't, would just be creating a category that, of a slush fund.
Well, the taxpayers would be paying for costs that are actually part, should be borne by the ratepayers, would be the effect.
Right, right. Then it would come out of the general fund.
And you may have, and you do have some ratepayers who are not taxpayers. In some cases, may not even be city residents, but they may own, you know, a system.
So it would be de facto a double dipping, then?
I don't know whether it's a double dipping, but I mean, I'm just saying that the whole idea is that, you know, the utilities, each of the enterprise funds operates as a separate cost center. And so, just like a business, you know, I don't know, like an LLC where you have, you know, individual cost centers for each components of that business, you're going to attribute all of the, both the direct and the indirect expenses, you're going to apportion them to the individual cost centers. And that's what we do with the enterprise funds.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Donnell?
And then one other point would be, if you didn't do indirects, you would make the system vastly more expensive, because you have the ability now to, for example, have administrative support from just the DPW in general, as opposed to create an entire new...
Well, that's the thing. If you wanted to have the stormwater enterprise hire a separate billing company to issue separate bills to do...
So it's, it saves a lot of money to do an essential service, yeah.
Yeah. So it's, yeah, exactly.
All right. Any other questions in Finance, Enterprise budgets? Hearing none? All in favor of a positive recommendation in Finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next one we're going to are the 2018 revolving fund accounts. And some of these are pretty self-explanatory, and some I'll give a little more detail on what they're used for. Fund number 2420 is the Energy and Sustainability Revolving Fund. allowable expenditures include materials, expenses, and contracted services associated with projects, programs, and policies that increase the level of energy efficiency and energy resource sustainability. This is administered by the Director of Central Services with the approval of the Northampton Energy Sustainability Commission and the mayor. The annual spending limit on this one is $150,000. The next one is the Hazmat Revolving Fund. It's administered by the fire chief. allowable expenditures include purchase and replacement of materials, equipment, and protective gear, vehicle repair and maintenance, preparedness, training, and activities for any per connection with the hazmat program. That's $85,000 spending limit. The DPW Public Works Construction Services Revolving Fund, obviously, the DPW director with the approval of the mayor is the authorizing agent. allowable expenditures include the purchase of materials, equipment, and vehicles for the Department of Public Works, as well as related construction costs on construction projects involving any of the divisions of DPW. The Senior Services Transportation Revolving Fund is administered by the Director of Senior Services. It's a $100,000 limit. allowable expenditures include vehicle acquisition, repair, and maintenance, gasoline mileage reimbursements, contracted services, salary stipends, and other expenses directly related to the operation of the transportation of the seniors. Senior Service Activities Revolving Fund, again, Director of Senior Services is authorized on this one. It's a $90,000 revolving fund. allowable expenditures include expenses related to activities, programs, and services offered by senior services, including salary stipends and employee benefits. Senior Services Gift Shop Revolving Fund, again, the Director of Senior Services administers. It's a $20,000 limit. Expenditures include purchases of gift shop merchandise, sales tax, contracted services, and expenses related to activities, programs, and services offered by the senior services folks, including salary stipends and employee benefits. Senior Services Food Service Revolving Fund, again, administered by the Director of Senior Services, $35,000 fund. allowable expenditures include kitchen equipment, supplies, meals, food, contracted services, and expenses related to the operation of the food service program at the senior center. Senior Services Publication Revolving Fund, again, Director of Senior Services administers. It's a $35,000 fund. allowable expenditures include printing, postage, advertisements, office supplies, and other expenses directly related to the creation and distribution of senior publications. Senior Trips and Travel Revolving Fund, again, Director of Senior Services administers. It's a $75,000 revolving fund. Expenses include contracted services, mission fees, reservations, postage, publicity, travel, refreshments, office supplies, and other expenses directly related to the promotion and implementation of travel opportunities, including salary stipends and employee benefits. Athletically Fees Revolving Fund, this one is administered by the Director of Parks and Recreation. It's a $200,000 fund. expenditures include salaries, employee benefits, expenses, and contracted services required to operate athletic leagues and programs for city residents supervised directly by the rec. Department. JFK Family Aquatic Center, again, administered by the Parks and Recreation Director. It's a $120,000 fund. expenditures include any, anything relative to maintaining, equipping, and staffing and operating the JFK Aquatic Center, including salaries and employees up there at the pool. Northampton Public Schools Transportation Revolving Fund, administered by the Superintendent of Schools. It's a $200,000 fund. allowable expenditures include contracted services, vehicle acquisition and repair, maintenance, and any expenses related to the administration of the fee-based transportation program. The Smith Vocational High School Farm Revolving Fund. This is administered by the Superintendent of Schools. It's a $100,000 fund. allowable expenditures include farm animals, vehicle repair, maintenance, gasoline, contracted services, and salaries and employee benefits related to the operation of the Smith Folk Farm. Tourism Directional Sign Program Revolving Fund. It's administered by the Department of Public Works, along with the approval of the mayor. It's a $10,000 fund. expenditures include material supplies and equipment, as well as labor relative to the erection and maintenance of tourism signs on any of the city streets. Public Health Nursing Program Revolving Fund. It is administered by the Director of the Health Department. It's a $20,000 fund. expenditures include support for the work of the Public Health Nursing Program, including the purchases of vaccines and other pharmaceuticals, medical and office equipment, professional equipment for nursing staff... equipment for nursing staff, contract staff, and associated education and outreach materials. And again, it's a $20,000 fund. James House Revolving Fund is administered by the Director of Central Services. It's an $85,000 fund. expenditures include the maintenance of the property, including salaries and employee benefits, equipment, supplies, materials, repairs, utilities, plowing, landscaping, and capital expenditures, printing, advertising, signage, and other costs for the administration of the James House. The Sharps Disposal Program Revolving Fund, again administered by the Director of Public Health. It's a $15,000 fund. expenditures include the cost of Sharps disposal containers, community education material, and other medical and office equipment needed to run the program. The Fire Alarm Monitoring Program Revolving Fund. This is administered by the Director of the Dispatch Center. It's a $60,000 revolving fund. allowable expenditures include salaries, employee benefits, equipment, repair, and maintenance, contracted services, and other expenses related to the operation of the Public Safety Dispatch Center. And the DPW Reuse Committee is the last revolving fund. Director of Public Works administers it. It's a $15,000 fund. expenditures include advertising expenses, tipping fees, swap shop operations, office supplies, expenses related to the conducting of workshops, fundraisers, and public events for reuse. Those are the revolving funds. We have a motion in finance.
Make the motion.
Second? Any questions on these for the mayor or the finance director? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is in order to approve free cash to the Capital Stabilization Fund and Fiscal Stability Funds. And if you recall, this is us shuffling money into these various stabilization reserve accounts. The first one is 17.328, in order to approve free cash to Capital Stabilization, Fiscal Stability Funds. Order that $450,000 be appropriated from the FY17 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance to the following accounts. $100,000 to Capital Stabilization, $100,000 to Stabilization, and $250,000 to Fiscal Stability. Do we have a motion in finance?
Make the motion.
Second? And the mayor has some details for us.
Again, as you said, Mr. Chair, this is something we do at the end of the fiscal year. Free cash will go away as of June 30th, so it's been our practice the last several years to allocate portions of it to our, to, actually, our three stabilization funds, capital, our regular stabilization fund, and then this fiscal stability fund. So this will bring our free cash balance down to about seventy, a little over $77,000 as we close out the fiscal year, which should be sufficient to cover any issues between now and the end of the fiscal year.
And again, this money comes from leftover dollar amounts from almost every city budget source. You know, it gets turned back if it doesn't get used, if there's a department vacancy or if things come in under budget. It gets turned back in, and then we put it into various stabilization funds to spend on projects that perhaps were unanticipated later on. This is where, for instance, we pay for like snow and ice coverage above and beyond what we budget.
That's right, and you'll have another order in this agenda that's for that same reason, and you used, we used a significant amount of free cash for the, for capital as well, for our capital plan, so.
Any other questions for the mayor? Hearing none, then do we have a positive recommendation coming from finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. All right, the next one is 17329. This is in order to approve $29,925 from free cash and a gift of $10,000 from Ray Ellerbrook's Memorial Fund to pay for the play structure at Arcanum Field. Whereas the play structure at Arcanum Field was destroyed by a fire on April 10th, 2017, whereas the city has received an insurance settlement in the amount of $29,925, which will flow to the city's undesignated fund balance for fiscal year 18, and whereas the Ray Ellerbrook Memorial Fund has also pledged a contribution of $10,000 towards the replacement of the play structure. Now, order that $29,925 be appropriated from the FY17 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance for the purposes of purchasing and installing a new updated play structure at Arcanum Field, and in addition to that appropriation, the City of Northampton City Council gratefully accepts the donation of $10,000 from the Ray Ellerbrook Memorial Fund, and in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, approves the use of the gifted funds as requested by the donor for a new and updated play structure at Arcanum Field. Do we have a motion in finance?
Make the motion.
Second? Okay, any questions for the mayor?
Fairly self-explanatory, obviously, I want to offer our thanks to the Ray Ellerbrook Memorial Fund for contributing this $10,000 to help supplement the insurance settlement, and I know that Director Emory Mogio is gonna be working on getting that play structure replaced.
So, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The next is 17330. This is in order to appropriate free cash and approve the use of gift funds for the Police Department Firing Range Project. Order that $50,000 be appropriated from the FY17 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance to the Police Department Firing Range Project to install necessary, to install necessary but unanticipated air handling components to complete the firing range project, and in addition to that appropriation, the City Council approves the use of $1,046.
No, no, no. One mil, oh, yes.
It's one, only 1,000 this time. I know we've been throwing around big numbers, but $1,046.65 in donated funds to the Police Department, and in accordance with Massachusetts General Law 44, Section 53A, approves the use of these funds towards the costs associated with the firing project. Do we have a motion in finance?
So moved.
Second? Okay, any?
So, as the counselors may recall, we did have as part of a capital project last year, the completion, finally, the completion of the firing range at the police station, which had to be value engineered out of the original project because of cost constraints. That work has been moving along. The actual, most of the internal components of the range have been installed. They have encountered a HVAC issue that they need to address, that we don't have enough money in the budget for, and so we are asking for this $50,000, which we may not need all of it, but we want to have it so that they can get the range completed, and hopefully this will finalize it. There's a long, basically, the range has a whole complex air circulation system that basically takes the lead out of the air and recycles it back, and there's some issues around this long 100-foot run in terms of the velocity, and so they need to do some additional work on it. So that's what this is for, and we do need to get this done, because I think as Chief Casper noted, that there's no, they actually took money out of their budget for hiring the outside range in anticipation of the range being completed. So provides us more incentive to get the, to get our own range completed this year.
Any other questions for the mayor on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is 17332. It's in order to approve the purchase of eight acres north of Route 66 in Mineral Hills for $200,000, and to approve the borrowing for such purpose. Order that whereas the Open Space and Recreation Multi-Use Plan 2011 to 18 recommends expansion of the Mineral Hills Conservation Area and provision of new greenways between existing protected areas, and where the owners of eight acres north of Route 66 in Mineral Hills have agreed to sell their property for $200,000, and whereas the property will provide cultural history of the West Farms area, historic use for mining, and will provide connection between recent acquisitions in Mineral Hills, and whereas the Massachusetts local acquisitions for natural diversity grants provides up to 64% reimbursement for the acquisition of certain conservation areas, and is a reimbursement program which requires the city to demonstrate that it has all the funds necessary to acquire conservation properties prior to state reimbursement. Therefore, order that the Conservation Commission is authorized to purchase or otherwise acquire for conservation and passive recreation purposes as provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Subsection 8C. Any fee easement or conservation restriction as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 184, Subsection 31, or any other interest in the above land, and any immediately adjoining land, and the City Council hereby accepts such conservation restrictions. If the Conservation Commission is authorized to grant conservation restrictions on any land so acquired, and the Conservation Commission is authorized to contract for and expend any federal, state, or other aid available for this project, including any grant from the Division of Conservation Services of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs under the Land Self-Help Act, Mass. General Law, Chapter 123A, Subsection 11. Further, that $200,000 is appropriated for such acquisition, that to meet the appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow the $200,000 under Mass. General Law, Section 44, Subsection 7, and that the Conservation Commission is authorized to contract for any federal, state, or other aid available for this project, including any grant from the Division of Conservation Services of the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs under the Land Self-Help Act, Chapter 123A, Subsection 11 of the General Laws. Further, any grants, donation, or sales shall be used to reimburse open space funds used for this purpose. We have a motion in?
Make a motion to.
Second?
Sarah LaValle also.
And yes, again, this is one of these ones where we're asking for your authorization. We're applying for a grant, and our conservation planner can talk to you about the actual parcel.
Very good.
All right, so I have a few slides that show the context of this acquisition. The Conservation Commission typically applies for a land grant every year if we have something lined up. Happily, this year we do. It's a reimbursable grant, as the order noted, so we have to demonstrate that the funding is available. It will not be utilized under any circumstances. This is one of the commission's big priorities for the year. We've made some progress in expanding the Mineral Hills to the south. The parcels to be acquired are shown in blue, and the light green parcel that connects Route 66 and Glendale Road was our most recent acquisition in this area. And a little bit earlier this spring, you approved another acquisition in this area, which isn't shown because we don't own it yet, but it is directly to the west of these parcels.
Sarah, you just mentioned something to the effect of Glendale Road. Where is this property?
So this is on the north side of Route 66. If you're, if you're driving west on 66 from the center of town, you drive through West Farms, you go around the, there's a few.
West Farms is to the right of the intersection.
Yeah, so you go past that, and these properties are on the right.
Who owns it?
The Walker family.
The who?
The Walker family. They're, they're no longer vocal.
Is there, do you, is there frontage on that property?
There is. There's actually a common driveway that was constructed that we could happily use for a parking area and access to the Mineral Hills, but these have been on the market for some time.
Because at the $200,000, that's why I was questioning if there was frontage, because that would have been a very high price without no frontage.
Yes, there's, no, there's definitely.
Frontage could actually put an affordable housing on there, too.
They're fairly high-end lots.
That's what?
I, I don't think the current owner would be interested, so the.
I was just thinking, have a chat or whatever.
Yeah, it seemed to make more sense to us to preserve it rather than develop it. We always try to provide affordable housing where it makes sense, but it didn't really seem to in this case.
And these were marketed for some time, I assume, in this instance, which is why they're probably in this direction. Were there other questions in finance of Sarah for these two parcels? Right, hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we've got another one for Sarah, I guess, another one. Upon the recommendation of the mayor and the Office of Planning and Sustainability, this is 17.333. This is in order to approve $600,000 for the purpose of improving public recreational facilities, and to borrow $600,000 under Mass. General Law, Section 44V, Subsection 11, and Mass. General Law, Section 44, Subsection 8C, and to contract for any federal, state, or other aid, including grants available for this project, and to authorize the mayor or as does he need to take such actions as necessary to carry out the terms and purposes of this grant. Whereas, the Northampton Multi-Use Trail Network is a regional recreational resource that also decreases vehicular traffic and promotes healthy lifestyles, and whereas the Open Space and Recreation Multi-Use Trail Plan 2011 to 18 prioritizes creation of neighborhood connections and spurs to increase access to the Norwattic Mass. Central Rail Trail, specifically a ramp near Look Park and a connection from Leeds to. And whereas the city has implemented trail connections and expansions over time as funding has become available to meet its trail development goals, and whereas the Massachusetts Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities Grant Program provides up to 64% reimbursement for preservation, restoration of urban parks, and is a reimbursement program which requires the city to demonstrate that it has all the funds necessary to acquire conservation properties prior to state reimbursement. Order that the City Council appropriate $600,000 for the purpose of improvements of public recreational facilities, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow $600,000 under Mass. General Law, 44, Mass. General Law, Section 44B, Subsection 11, Mass. General Law, Section 44, Subsection 8C, and to contract for any federal, state, or other aid available for the project, including any grant from the Division of Conservation Services of the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs under the Park Act, Chapter 933 of the Acts of 1977, as amended, and any other way connected with the scope of this article, and the Northampton Office of Planning and Sustainability is authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary on behalf of the City of Northampton, and the mayor may, and that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to take any such action as necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Office of Planning and Sustainability. We have a motion on this one?
Make the motion.
Second?
All right, so another grant application. As you know, we are always working to improve our multi-use trail network. It takes a long time, it's very expensive, but the rewards really pay off. So the arrows show where these ramps are proposed, one on the north side of Look Park, and the other is a connection to the town of Williamsburg. Again, we're just demonstrating commitment for the reimbursable park grant. This is the same grant program that funded the bulk of Pulaski Park in addition to CPA funds. And the next slide shows why this work is necessary. So on the left, this is the affinity path that people have created to get down to the parking lot by the former Look Restaurant. There are some off-ramps a little bit farther south, but people want to go where they want to go, and they're gonna keep using this, so it's important to get people on and off the trail where it makes sense. And the, the second picture is, shows where the trail just abruptly stops in Leeds on the way to Williamsburg. Williamsburg has been working diligently to upgrade their section of the path, and we have just a little bit more to go, so we want to get it wrapped up and make an actual connection.
Excellent. Any specific questions for Sarah on these projects, counselor?
So just so I'm clear, that you're gonna build a ramp down into the Look parking lot?
No, the picture was just to demonstrate that people really want to get off the trail at that point, and get, get some juice at the gas station and get off.
Well, I'm sorry, but you're gonna build a ramp?
An off-ramp, yeah, but not in that, this exact location, just near there.
Could you, I'm sorry, where, where exactly is it, you?
On the.
Maybe I should know, but I don't.
I, I'm a little bit late to the game on this project, so I don't know exactly where, but we do have construction documents available I can certainly share with you.
Well, I can look at those before second reading. I mean, it seems like a good idea and concept, I'd just be curious to know where you're gonna.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty far advanced in design, I just haven't had a chance to be briefed on the whole thing at this point.
Well, you're only dealing with a million things, so, thank you.
Any other questions for Sarah on this one? Hearing none in finance, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great, thank you, Sarah. Now we're on to some budgetary transfers, because we're at the end of the fiscal year, with some money around. This is 17.334, in order to authorize budgetary transfers. These are all information technologies. So from permanent salaries, we're taking $30,000, and from overtime, we're taking $10,000, and they're gonna wind up in technology and communications in that same department. So $30,000 is coming from salaries and overtime, it's going into technology and communications, which I'm assuming is equipment, and so it's a total of $40,000 moving within that budget. I think the mayor, do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second? And the mayor can give us more specifics.
Yeah, because we're trying, we're asking to move money from PS to OM, requires a council vote, and again, this is just at the end of the year, some technology projects related to communication, the phone system, they need some additional funding, and so that's why we're asking to move some excess funding from PS to OM.
Any questions for the mayor on that one?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The next team, next one is 17.335. The next one is 17.335, in order to reprogram $5,000 for Florence Fields Pavilion Roof. Order that $5,000 of the remaining balance in the park and recreation building project be reprogrammed to provide additional funds for the Florence Fields Pavilion Roof, for roof clips needed to prepare for the installation of solar panels on that pavilion. Do we have any motion in finance?
Make a motion.
Second, I think the mayor can give us a few more details on it. And this is the, it's coming from the money that built their new office building at JK.
Again, it's taking money from one capital project, moving it to a different capital project, and as the, as the order states, we're trying to finalize the solar installation at, on the new pavilion at Florence Fields, and this additional funds are needed for roof clips that were not part of the original design documents. So that's why we're making this transfer. Yes.
Just wanted to check, this doesn't have anything to do with the slowdown of that project, because wasn't this supposed to be done last season?
Yeah, it's a little bit related, not exactly related. The slowdown of the project was primarily because the roof contractor put the wrong roof on the building, and so we reached, we kind of ran into an impasse so that we could just have a extended discussion, including between legal counsel, over the contractor's responsibility to install the roof that had been specked out. And so that, that's been resolved, and the contractor is slated to install the proper roof. And as a side issue to that, as we've moved forward on it, there's an issue regarding clips and whether or not they were specked properly, and so we're covering the cost of those clips so we can get it done. Basically, what happened is there was a metal roof designed for the pavilion, but it was, it was basically a standing seam metal roof, you know, that have the grooves?
Yep.
And we specifically chose that because we were putting solar panels on, and the contractor put a flat metal roof on it, which would have required us to drill through said roof in order to install the solar. So we were pretty insistent, we wanted the roof that we paid for, so that's why it took, there's been delay, there are contractors covering that cost.
And what do the panels actually power?
They will be, I think we're actually going to be doing a, you know, a net metering agreement as part of this, so it will be providing some power for the site, but more importantly, there'll be, you know, S-Rex credits that we'll receive as part of the agreement, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Mayor. How can a contractor put on the wrong roof? I don't get it.
Well, it's a small building, and they, I think they just, they did it in one day, and I'm not quite sure how there was, again, this was part of the conversation that we had, and it was a metal roof, there's two, there's different kinds of metal roofs, and this, you know, we had specifically specked the standing seam, and they put a continuous solid metal roof on. And so, so they're going to remove that roof, we have all the materials there, they're removing that roof and putting on the standing seam roof. We ran into this additional glitch with the clips for solar.
But if that was on the contractor, should think they would have read that.
One would think that, one would think that, and all I can tell you is that after much discussion, the contractor will be installing the roof that we, that we specked out.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the roof clips for the solar? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and now Sarah comes back to see us again, we do some community preservation. The first one is 17.337, in order for invasive species removal, the Lethrip communities, it's a $3,000 program, whereas the Lethrip community submitted a small grants application for community preservation funding for priority invasive species removal at its Parsons Brook site, on which the city holds permanent conservation restrictions, and whereas the project will continue to help to improve and preserve the health of sensitive habitats in Parsons Brook watershed, and has strong community support, and will be leveraged for private funds and volunteer effort, and whereas the project's control and removal of non-invasive Japanese barberry, oriental bittersweet, multifloroas, winged, something, I don't know what that is. Garlic mustard, we wrote that in. Eulanyptis, or something like that. It'll be gone soon, don't worry about it. And will complement city efforts to reduce invasive, invasives in critical areas, and whereas the applicant has welcomed public use of its popular trails, and will increase public knowledge of trails on the property as part of the project, and whereas on April 26, 2017, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend $3,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to be used in support of the project, now therefore be ordered that $3,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Lethrip communities, and that the grantee meet the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the council, specifically the $3,000 is appropriated from the CPA open space account. Do we have a motion in?
Make a motion.
Second, and Sarah's back. Any questions for Sarah on the chasing away the invasive species? Counselor Nash.
How do you say that word, winged?
Yonimus?
Eonimus. Eonimus, or? Eonimus. Eonimus. You, now I can't say.
I remember that from Dr. Seuss. Latin wasn't strong.
I knew she could.
So this is a continuation of a previously, previously awarded project to Lethrip. This map was included in their application. It shows where the Lethrip homes are located, the Park Hill Farm APR that the city holds a preservation restriction on, and the small CPA work area that the city also holds a conservation restriction on. It's a really environmentally sensitive area, lots of endangered species, and they've had a real problem with lots and lots of these species coming in and sort of taking over the habitat, so they've taken this on as a project of their lands committee. It has a tremendous amount of support and buy-in from the Lethrip residents, and they've done a lot of both fundraising and active on-the-ground polling of stuff out there, so the CPC thought this was a great project. Yeah.
Counselor Labarche, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Sarah, how many acres are we talking about on that conservation area?
Oh, this one is.
About 20-something?
Yeah, 20, between 20 and 30. But it's adjacent to other protected city property.
Do they do this every year?
They recently started, they've been seeing this being an increasing problem over the last few years, so they thought this was really important to get going on while they could still.
Right, because a friend of ours is the one that donated all that property for the Lethrip homes so that it could be developed.
Yeah, riverfront areas are tough because the seeds are coming down the river, and then also being deposited farther down, so this is a great thing.
Some of those plants are awful.
Yeah. When the CPC did a site visit, they saw a tremendous difference between the areas that, where invasives had been removed and where they hadn't, and I think that really convinced them to support it. And Lethrip also encourages public access to this property, and as part of the award, they'll be putting up signs and making maps for public distribution.
That's great, they're doing that.
Counselor.
I have to make my, be consistent and just make my statement that I, it's very difficult for me to support using CPA funds for pesticide use. I did a lot of reading of all of the support documents that kind of explained how the rodeo would be applied, using Thinvert, and I had to do a lot of research about what Thinvert is and how it works, and I just, I feel like I have to step back from supporting this just because I, until we as a city do a little bit more research, I think, about how to control invasives in different ways besides the use of glyphosate, which has really consistently been found in research, is now outlawed in many countries in the EU, unless we do that research and try and figure out other ways to deal with invasives, it's just hard for me to support CPA dollars going to this.
Call me Ryan. On that point, just because the Conservation Commission weighed in, weighed in on it, right, and approved it?
They issued a permit for it.
Okay.
They didn't, and they also used some of these treatments on their own conservation properties where infestations really seem to warrant it.
Okay.
On a case-by-case basis, and Lethrip is the property owner, so they were on board with this proposal.
I don't mean to point that out as a way of saying pesticide use is okay in water supply protection districts, and I have questions about it as well. I mean, has the, has the Conservation Commission, to your knowledge, without straying too far afield, ever discussed this very issue in this context?
Yeah, I mean, every time an application comes in, it does come up.
Yeah.
Again, we don't have a consistent city guidance about where pesticide should and shouldn't be used, so at this point, because it's being used as, as an ecological benefit, then they're on board with that, but they're certainly willing to have the discussion.
Might be a good discussion to have.
Any other questions in finance? So it's winged eonimus?
Yes.
I got it right, winged eonimus.
Yes.
Then, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All righty. The next one is 17.338. This is in order for Hampshire Inn Affordable Housing Expansion from the Valley CDC. Order that whereas the Valley Community Development Corporation submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for the Hampshire Inn expansion project at 82 Bridge Street, and whereas the project will increase and improve the number of affordable rental units at the existing property from 15 SRO occupants' units to approximately 30 enhanced single-room occupancy units, and will also rehabilitate the historic structure, and whereas suitable affordable housing, especially single-room occupancy, is a housing type that is still in demand locally and regionally, and whereas the housing units will be restrictive to individuals and families earning 80 percent of the area median income or below, and whereas the Valley CDC has an excellent record of creating affordable housing, and whereas on April 27, 2017, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend the $50,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support the project, now therefore be ordered that $50,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Valley Community Development Corporation for Hampshire Inn expansion, a project for historic rehabilitation and capital repairs to 82 Bridge Street and expansion of affordable housing, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the city council, specifically the $44,000 is appropriated from the CPA historic reserve account, and $6,000 appropriated from the CPA affordable housing reserve account. Do we have a motion in finance?
Um.
Second.
Second.
Questions for Sarah on this one?
Yes. Sarah, question. On this, it says on the second paragraph that the project will increase and improve the number of affordable rental units at the existing property from 15 single-room occupancy units to approximately 30, correct? Then if you go down, one, two, three, fourth, it says the housing units will be restricted to individuals and families, so a single room is for one person.
Uh, that's true. Yeah, that's, that's the standard affordable housing restriction language. You can't prohibit families from living there, so it's all-inclusive, but a family wouldn't apply. I wouldn't imagine to live in a.
This is a little confusing here.
So, so this project is one that the CPC felt was really, really important to demonstrate some sort of local commitment on, but they unfortunately didn't have a lot of funding available this round because there were so many great projects submitted in the first half of the fiscal year, but this will at least allow Valley CDC to move forward with some of their tax credit applications. I know a lot of you are familiar with the project because city council supported a zoning change to allow this to take place. The building, which if you're looking at historic Northampton, would be on the right of it, has been used for affordable housing for many, many years, it's, it's, it needs some improvement as the pictures show, it doesn't have any handicapped accessibility, it needs some work to serve the residents better. And the council order is somewhat intentionally vague because it is so early in the project. Usually, we nail down the exact number of units to be created, but we didn't want to restrict them this early in the process, and we will most likely come back with something that's a little more definitive.
Other questions in finance? Counselor O'Donnell.
So, did I understand you to say that the Community Preservation Committee expressed an interest in giving more to this project, that it just didn't have the money?
Yeah, absolutely. They encouraged Valley CDC to return again in a subsequent funding.
So they might do in subsequent funding, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions in finance? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Very good. Next is 17.339, in order for conservation funds for the Northampton Conservation Commission. Order that whereas the Northampton Conservation Commission submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funds for the Conservation Fund, and whereas the fund makes possible increased acquisitions or protection of open space parcels in Northampton by supporting fast action on time-sensitive real estate opportunities, and whereas the project may leverage additional public funds or private funds, and whereas the project meets the goal of the Northampton Sustainability Plan for protection of open space and agricultural lands, and whereas the applicant has used the funds effectively in the past towards the protection of several hundred acres of open space, reflecting the goals established by the Community Preservation Committee, whereas all land purchases will be reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission and the city council, whereas on April 27, 2017, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend $22,685 in Community Preservation Funds be used to support this project, now therefore be ordered that $22,685 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Northampton Conservation Fund, and the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the city council, specifically that $15,685 allocated from the CPA undesignated reserve, and $7,000 is allocated from the CPA open space reserve account. Do we have a motion in?
Make a motion.
Second.
All right, so I don't have a slide for this one, but I could take a picture of any piece of conservation property acquired within the last 10 years, and it would have been affected by this fund in some way. It basically allows for due diligence and fast action on agricultural and conservation opportunities. If we didn't have this, if we needed to do a title search or an environmental assessment, we'd have to scrape to come up with the funding, but this is a ready source for us.
Sarah, we do this yearly.
Yes, you do.
This is a regular one, and this is sort of your, oh, by the way, account for something that needs fast action.
Yes.
Gives you some money to. Any other questions from anyone on this one? Then, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right. And the last one is 17.340. It's in order to acquire any fee easement and/or interest in land located in Olander Drive for the purposes of creating a memorial park. Order that whereas the master plan for creation of Village Hill at the former Northampton State Hospital requires that a parcel of land be set aside for a park to memorialize the patients and employees at the hospital, whereas Mass. Development is providing a quarter of an acre, a parcel ID 31C, Lot 44, the original site of the 1876 Fountain, now located in Olander Drive at no cost to the city, and whereas the Northampton State Hospital Memorial Committee has secured community preservation funding and donations for the development of the memorial park and restoration of the fountain, now order that the City of Northampton to its Park and Recreation Department is authorized to acquire any fee easement and/or other interests in the above land for purposes of creation of a memorial park. The mayor is authorized to grant a conservation restriction per Mass. General Law, Section 184, or Chapter 184, Section 31, on said land. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so this one's exciting. This has been in the works for years and years and years. I know some of you have been involved with the state hospital redevelopment for probably it seems like forever, and the, part of, part of the requirements for the redevelopment were that, it was sort of a vague requirement at the time, but that some sort of memorialization be provided, and over the years, it's morphed into this memorial park, to be located on the original site of the fountain. The map shows where it is on the east side of Olander Drive, next to the existing trail system, adjacent, some of you, some of you know the area, it's adjacent to Jonathan White's house. The next slide shows what the area used to look like. So if you look on the right side of the picture, there is the fountain, so that is the exact spot of the memorial park, and we're planning to have some interpretive panels so that you can see what you would have been looking at 100 years ago.
See the fountain, where's the fountain on?
The circle in the.
Yeah.
Top of the road.
So to the, to the right of the circle, it's very small. It doesn't look the same anymore. So we're, the fountain restoration is currently underway.
Thank you.
CPA funds have been provided, we finally have enough. CPA funds have been provided. We finally have enough funding in hand to break ground on this, and Mass Development has given the okay to turn the parcel over. And the next slide is a, for all you, everybody who likes CAD, this is a plan of what the park will look like. So, we'll have a connection down to the open space and the paths, which the planning board thought was really important. The fountain will be located in the front, and we're also planning to have some plantings and interpretive signage and benches, which aren't shown on this plan. Very exciting.
Very exciting. Any other questions on this one? Counselor?
Just, I'm wondering, what's the timeline on this generally?
For construction of the park?
Yeah, what do you anticipate?
We're ready to get going now, essentially. We have the funding in hand. If we are able to get it done soon enough, we can hopefully piggyback on some of the DPW's contracts for this year, so that's what we're hoping for.
Sarah, what is the cost of the restoration of the fountain? Do you know?
Fountain restoration is about $35,000. We were originally planning and hoping to have all of the missing components that mysteriously disappeared.
It's a very large mountain.
Yeah. It was a lot bigger, but some of the other top components were taken. So, we're restoring what we have on hand. It's not going to be a functioning fountain at this point. Someday, it might be, and we hope to acquire or fabricate those missing portions.
Counselor Paul.
You mentioned that there'd be interpretive signage about the site, but I'm wondering if it's going to have information about, you know, who lived on the site.
Yeah, absolutely. So, the intent of the park is to memorialize not only the site and what it used to be, but also the patients and employees who lived and worked there for so many years.
The fountain has been in our possession for a while, correct?
Yes.
When did the parks vanish?
Before the DPW moved it, unfortunately. Yeah. We were happily able to find one of the lions. Somebody found it in their basement and donated it to the city, so we used that to create some new pieces, so that's great.
Check my basement, Sarah.
Donation returned. Donating something that was ours at the beginning was just kind of a loose interpretation of the term.
I'm sure the top of the fountain is making a lovely addition to someone's backyard at this point.
At this very point. Well, we'll keep an eye. I get in a lot of backyards. I'll keep an eye out. Any other questions on this one? Hearing none. All in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. And with that, we've reached the end of the agenda. Can anybody think of anything else you want to do in finance other than adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Well, actually...
I didn't get a second one.
Was there a second adjourned?
I seconded.
Yeah. Can you hold off on the recess for one item? I would like to move item 312 up. Mr. O'Brien has been...
Yes.
He's sat through two long meetings, the two longest meetings we've had in a year. I think it's, I think we should give him a...
I do, too.
So, we can spare him the last hour, if we can, so. So, now that we've come out of recess, and we'll go back to recess after this item, but item 17.312, and that's the order to accept the donation of a memorial basketball court from League Legends. And this is the second reading. I'll accept a motion.
Yes, make a motion.
Any further discussion on this item? Counsel LeBarge?
I received an email, and so did our council clerk, and she had called me in regards, if she thought it was a resident of mine, and it was. Anyways, I don't know, Bill, if you had gotten the first email on?
Yeah, I'm a receipt of all the emails on, yeah.
Well, anyways, Sarah Madden. Did you get the one from the superintendent also?
No.
As long as you got the first one. But anyways, I want to read that off. The mayor, also, did you get that one from the mayor?
No, boy, I got dropped off a lot of CDs.
Because it was sent to the mayor's office also in regards, do you want to talk about that, Mayor?
Yeah, we, again, this is a project that will be, that's being coordinated by the school department, and they've been working really closely with Tony, the facilities manager, and with Sarah Madden, the principal, and the superintendent, and so you're accepting the gift, you know, the larger gift, and they're working on the actual logistics. So, when I got those concerns, I referred to Principal Madden and to Dr. Provost. So, I think you're referring to the responses that they provided to your constituent.
Anyways, thank you, Mayor. This one here is from the superintendent, and he is saying, "Thank you for your communication. Please allow me to clarify that no public funds will be used for the court, and that students will not lose their playground. The court has been donated to the school by the League Legends organization, and currently existing fields and play structures will remain intact. In a different facility improvement project that has nothing to do with the basketball court, we are making substantial improvements to our video surveillance and capabilities to address the problem of any appropriate after-hours activities on campus. Thank you for alerting me to the hazards posed by falling trees, and that's been taken care of, because we went through that once before, and I got ahold of central service for them to go out and take a look at that." So, that was from Mr. Provost. And this is from Sarah Madden today, which she also talked about the last email that came in. This is Sarah Madden, principal at Arcade Van Ryan Road School. "Mr. Koloski, I am sorry for any upset feelings regarding donation of the basketball court to our school grounds. In my opinion, there are many positives for our community. One, the court does not come from any public funds. Two, the hoops will be adjustable so that younger students will be better able to access basketball games. Three, no part of our playground or swings will be removed to allow for space for the new court. Four, the court will be a wonderful upgrade to our facilities. Also, many community members currently access our basketball courts and playground with no added maintenance cost or public bathrooms. Sometimes, the recreation department has a porta potty out on the fields, and I often allow Mr. Koloski's grandsons and friends to use the school bathroom after school hours at no extra cost. There are no plans for additional bathrooms or maintenance costs. So, charity cameras have been needed here for many years, and I am happy to report that they will be added soon as part of our capital planning, and I have to say that the mayor was very, very helpful with us within the past couple of years of getting these installed because it was in dire need." So, she is understanding that, she understands the concerns about the lighting, and I also, too, in talking with Michael O'Brien, they're going to work everything out with planning and with central service to make sure it does not affect any of the houses abutting the back of Ryan Road School. So, Sarah Madden is saying that they certainly want the school to be a good neighbor, and she appreciates the communication. So, I just want to say, I think this is an excellent, excellent project, and so many people, I went to an ice cream social two weeks ago at the school, and so many teachers have been excited about it, and even the children will be excited. So, I want to thank Michael O'Brien and all the guys that are with the Legends that are putting this together, because it's really such a great memorial.
Any other questions or comments? I'd just like to say, and this, Mr. O'Brien addressed these in public comment, the same issues, and that I have yet to see a project that met this level of diligence and outreach, particularly given the fact that it is, as we've said numerous times, at no cost to the city. This is a memorial that's being donated and managed essentially into perpetuity, and nothing but an asset for the school and the school programs and the community and the neighborhood. And they will have to comply with all the existing standards relative to lighting and everything else that any other project would have to be implemented. So, I, you know, neighbors express concerns usually born out of not knowing what the circumstances are, and I hope that any residents who have expressed concerns, at least maybe hopefully those will be accommodated with these answers. So, and so far, and I know that these guys have worked very hard to hear their concerns and address them, so.
The only complaint is what I see right here is one.
Yeah, so far, I've only known of the one, but one is one and worth addressing, and I believe they have been. So, any other, any other discussion? Counsel Klein?
I just want to say that a number of Ward 7 residents, families have students there at the school, and I heard from a few people how excited they are and what a wonderful project this is and how grateful they are for it. So, I just want to say that. And I also just feel like it's really important that we note that this is kind of the best of what residents of a city can do, is, you know, come together and do a passion project like this and bring something that really enhances the city to the city. So, thank you so much. I can't see you, but you're behind the podium there. Thank you so much.
With that, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Klein?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Sharon?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
That passes unanimously in second reading and is done. Thank you very much. We'll now have a 10 and 1/4 minute recess.
We do our eight-minute recesses.
Just speaking of hard program.
They're like twelve minutes.
All right, we're out of recess, out of our ten-hour recess, and back to the regular order of things. And we'll start off with the financial orders that you just heard and discussed in the Finance Committee, all coming forward with positive recommendations. So, we start off with item seventeen point three two five. It's an order to approve the FY 2018 general fund budget.
Move to approve.
All that. Motion's made in second. Further discussion on this item? Roll call, please, Pam.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
That passes in first reading and will be, as I said, revisited at our next meeting. Item seventeen point three two six, orders to approve the FY 2018 enterprise funds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion on the revolving funds? Roll call, please.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
That passes in first reading. Item seventeen point three two eight, that's an order to approve free cash, the capital stabilization, stabilization and fiscal stability funds, in the first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, passes in first reading. Item seventeen point three two nine, it's an order to approve $29,925 from free cash and a gift of $10,000 from the Ray Ellerbrook Memorial Fund for the play structure at Arcanum Field.
Move to approve.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
All right, that passes in first reading. Item seventeen point three three two, this is an order to approve purchase of eight plus or minus acres north of Route 66 in the Mineral Hills area for $200,000 and to approve borrowing for such purchase.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
And passes. Item seventeen point three three, this is an order to approve appropriation of $600,000 for the purpose of improvement of public recreational facilities and to borrow $600,000 under Mass. General Law, Section 11, Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 8C, and to contract for any federal, state, and/or other aid, including grants available for this project, and authorize the mayor or his designee to take such actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. Any discussion? Pam?
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council, excuse me, Council Carney?
Yes.
That passes in first reading. Item seventeen point three three four, this is an order to authorize budgetary transfers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
No.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Now, why don't we take seventeen point three three eight and seventeen point three three nine together? Is everyone okay with that?
Moving this group.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Do I get a second?
Yeah. Council Murphy? Everyone's chiming in today. This is great. I'd like to see that everyone's making the motions and seconding. This is excellent.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
No.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Now, why don't we take seventeen point three three eight and seventeen point three three nine together? Is everyone okay with that?
Moving this group.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Do I get a second?
Yeah. Council Murphy? Everyone's chiming in today. This is great. I'd like to see that everyone's making the motions and seconding. This is excellent.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Those pass in first reading as well. Item seventeen point three four zero, this is an order to acquire any fee easement and/or any other interest in land located on Old Land Drive for the purpose of creating a memorial park, first reading.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
That passes in second reading.
Item seventeen point three one five, this is an order to release an conservation easements in the Sawmill Hills Conservation Area on Roberts Hill.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
That passes in second reading.
Item seventeen point three one nine, this is an order to approve end-of-the-year budget transfers, second reading.
Move to approve.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. Item seventeen point three one six is an order to accept the revised sections of law relative to parking revenue, second reading.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please. That's okay.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
No.
Council LaBarge?
Yes.
Now, why don't we take seventeen point three three eight and seventeen point three three nine together? Is everyone okay with that?
Moving this group.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Do I get a second?
Yeah. Council Murphy? Everyone's chiming in today. This is great. I'd like to see that everyone's making the motions and seconding. This is excellent.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Scher?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Klein?
No.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Now, why don't we take 17.338 and 17.339 together?
Is everyone okay with that?
Moving to group.
Motion's made in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Klein?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Klein?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Klein?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Klein?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
That passes in second reading. Now we move on to orders. Item 17.313, this is an order to accept an easement from the Florence Bank, also a second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion's made in seconded. Any discussion? Pam?
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
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 Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
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 Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second.
Can't change it again now.
Well, you can always change it. You can always change it. Item 17.289, this is an ordinance relative to expanding permit time limits in 350, well, chapter 350, section 47, and 156, section 6B, to match recently amended enabling legislation and mass general law. Chapter 40A, section 9, Municipal Modernization Act, is second reading.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading.
Item 17.313, this is an order to accept an easement from the Florence Bank, also a second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion's made in seconded. Any discussion? Pam?
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second.
Can't change it again now.
Well, you can always change it. You can always change it. Item 17.289, this is an ordinance relative to expanding permit time limits in 350, well, chapter 350, section 47, and 156, section 6B, to match recently amended enabling legislation and mass general law. Chapter 40A, section 9, Municipal Modernization Act, is second reading.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Schirr?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. I have no updates. There has been no information request unless somebody has one now, committee study address. I have a request, no new business, so that leaves us with one item left, and it's all on you.
Move adjourn.
Motion's made, seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, please say.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much.